The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and the City Council for June. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, just, it looks to me that we do have a quorum. Let's see, I see Commissioner Kelfy and Jones are calling in. We have Commissioner Burns and Commissioner O'Brien, Commissioner Mace, and Commissioner Tebow is, okay, so we are good. Okay, so for those of you who are new to our joint meeting, we meet once a month as the Board of Finance and the City Council jointly to approve matters that both of our boards have already independently seen. So you're not going to see a lot of discussion at this meeting, but at its conclusion, which is a very quick meeting, we will go right into our monthly City Council meeting. So the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on May 12th, 2020.
Move or approve?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is our consent calendar. Does anybody from the Board of Finance or City Council have any item that they would like to remove for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is to make an additional appropriation of $360 within the special grants and donations fund funded by donations for Best for Bristol.
Move or approve? Second.
Motion by Smith, second by Han, any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is to transfer $13,000 within the equipment building sinking fund for capital outlay for Parks Recreation, Youth, and Community Services.
So move.
Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is to transfer $1,894,312.57 of uncollectible taxes, $1,255,915.61 for motor vehicles, $494,920.26 for supplemental motor vehicle, and $143,476.70 for personal property.
Motion to approve? Second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, to transfer $720,055 within the equipment sinking fund for the purchase of capital outlay for various departments.
Move or approve? Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, to make an additional appropriation of $60,000 within the capital projects fund for Pine Lake Adventure Park upgrades.
Motion to approve?
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller, who is joining us remotely tonight.
Good evening, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. We had some technical issues, so I'm glad that it's working well. Couple of things to report, I know you have my report in front of you, really no concerns right now with regard to our tax revenues. I did note that our motor vehicle sup is down about $155,000 with regard to where it was last year, but again, we are at 135% roughly of what we had anticipated. So we are at 1.88 million and we budgeted 1.4. All other revenues on the tax side are coming in very well, we are at 99.9% of our current tax revenues and as well as our prior tax revenues as well, we're at 104.4%. Building permit revenue is coming in again well through the end of the year, we're at 122.6% of budget, and conveyance fees as well are coming in right now that they're at 105.6, and again, this is with just about 11 months complete through the end of the year. As reported, our investment earnings, right now we're at 121% of our budget. Prior year, we had collected for the same period 1.23 million, this year we're at 1.13, so a little bit behind last year, but again, well ahead of budget, which will be good. So on the revenue side, I don't anticipate any issues, any of the service fees, any of the tax revenues. The only issue that I do see, again, on the state grants, which I do mention, we have not received the Menchentucka Pequot Grant Fund yet, we will get our last installment of that in June, as well as the school readiness and the excess cost. We did, and I think I did report this previously, our ECS grant will be about $263,000 less due to prior year adjustments for excess cost for special ed. On the expenditure side, I think we're doing relatively well. I know we have had back on a lot, and we're really reviewing expenses as they come through in the purchase requisition. Everyone should have all their requisitions in through now, through this week, so we will start looking at finalizing this fiscal year. I did note, we have actually completed our first round of our FEMA package, which actually we are going to add to that. What I reported to you was through April 18th. We have had a number of calls over the last couple of days with regard how to apply for the FEMA funds, as well as the state coronavirus relief fund. So I just want to talk about that for a minute, because you may have heard, there was a notification that came out from the state last week that said that we were going to receive 1.36 million in coronavirus relief funding. That was the estimate that we had submitted to OPM back in April. We do, did find out more information about how that will all work, those were our estimated costs through June 30th of what we thought we were going to spend back in April. That included everything for education, as well as the health district, the water department, and the city. The way this is going to work, the state will, has basically guaranteed that we will receive everything that we have spent, but what they want us to do is apply for the FEMA funds first, so we need to exhaust those funds, get those approved, and then apply to the state for the coronavirus relief fund. Also, the state coronavirus relief fund will not cover a lot of the school funds, so a lot of the costs that the school has incurred for like the laptops and the distance learning will be covered under a different grant that the schools have received. So we're keeping a very close eye on this. We anticipate that we will get our first FEMA application in by the end of June. We are hoping that we will have a two to four week turnaround of when those funds are received. And the reason why I want to mention that is it's very important that we get that so that we can record the receivable of those funds by June 30th. Obviously, we don't want to have the auditors come back and say that we can't record those grants. So we'll submit everything that we have through June, and then after that, we will submit everything on a quarterly basis after that with regard to FEMA. Are there any questions with that, because it's been a very confusing thing to decipher and to understand?
I have a question, Diane.
Okay.
First, I want to be assured that all costs for applying, according to the recommendations of the state, will be covered, including any of the labor costs or administrative costs for applying, since I assume that would be covered under the FEMA funds and the COVID-19 funds.
So Marie, I don't know that they will, that the funds for applying, like are you looking at for estimates of our time to prepare everything?
Exactly, yeah, exactly, because as I, because my second question, well, or comment is that, in my reading of what's been available just publicly, it seems to be ever-changing and a little bit confusing as to exactly which expenses are going to be covered. So I don't know if this is a one-day period of time for your office, a couple of hours, two days, or whatever, but I'm always interested in understanding that we appreciate and value and cost out and seek to be recompensed for the work associated with these very unclear and uncertain situations.
So those are all very good points, and I will look into them, and I know I have another call tomorrow on, with the state on some of these issues as well, and I will ask about that, but from what I understand, we can only apply for things that have not been budgeted. So right now, my, we're not incurring any overtime to prepare these, we're doing them on my staff's regular time. So unless we were incurring costs that were not budgeted and not anticipated, right now, my understanding is items like that would not be covered, but that is a very good point, and I will ask that tomorrow on my call.
Right.
And I'll, of course, back at the Board of Finance meeting, but like I said, I know they were very clear with anything that was not budgeted can be applied for. And it has been very confusing to decipher, I will admit. Anything else?
We're all a little obsessed about watching Rob Long go play with his dog.
Through the tears.
Hi, Rob.
Diane?
I swear I set my camera off.
All right, so Diane, if we've incurred those expenses this year and we don't receive funds, we'll end this year with that deficit and then have those funds next year because we're on a cash basis, correct?
No, the auditors will allow us to...
They will?
They will, they will allow us to, well, this is why it's important that we get this in by June 30th. From what I understand, FEMA is doing everything they can to expedite reimbursements that are submitted. We want to get this in because we have to get the grant within 60 days, so we're actually, we're on a modified accrual basis, which is, yes, we're on a cash basis, but modified accrual for revenues, which mean any revenues we receive within a 60-day period, we can actually recognize it at June 30th.
Okay.
So that's why we need to get that in, so...
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. And are there any other questions on FEMA or the coronavirus relief fund? And you will hear more about it, I'm sure, next month as well, as we, as we get through this and start applying for the grants. If not, the only other thing that I have to report, we actually have started preliminary audit work this week, and that will be ongoing for this week, and they will be gone, and then they will be back in October for final work. So we're hoping again to have a mid-December issue date, that is our goal. Last year, if you remember, our OPEB and our actuarial valuation for pensions held us up, and we're doing everything we can this year to make sure that doesn't happen again, so we've been working with the actuaries on that. So other than that, that's really all I have to report.
Diane, one question from Orlando.
Yes.
So you said 1.36 mil for the reimbursement, for the coronavirus reimbursement, is that FEMA or is that combined FEMA and state?
It will be combined, so what happens is, we have to apply to FEMA first, FEMA only covers 75% of eligible costs. Anything that is not covered by FEMA, we can submit to the state under the coronavirus relief fund. So we're anticipating, the reason the state is doing this is they want to be able to get, they want to be able to distribute to all, they want to make sure that all the cities and towns are made whole for all of these costs, and they determine that this is the best way to do that. Apply to FEMA first, and then they would cover everything above that, the 25% and any other ineligible costs, and then from there, they're hoping that they will have funds available to get us through the end of the calendar year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Diane.
Yep, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions for the Controller? Okay, is there any other business proper to come before the joint meeting, before we adjourn and go into our council meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. It is a couple of minutes after 7:00, so if the council was so inclined, I'd like to be able to move right into our City Council meeting, since we do have several items on the agenda that might require some additional conversation. Does anybody need a break? Okay, all right then, it is 7:03, and I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 9th, 7:00 PM, in our City Hall Council chambers. For opening ceremonies, I'd like to again ask those joining us, both remotely, as well as those guests in the chamber, if they would like to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like the members of the City Council to introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
Greg Han, District 1.
Scott Rosato, District 1.
Dave Perlesky, District 2.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou, joining us is our Town and City Clerk, Therese Pack, and Don LaBella, our Assistant Town and City Clerk. And tonight, we have about 12 people who are joining us as we slowly reopen and come back to public meeting sector rules, and I'd like to welcome all of them, some of them were here for the pride flag raising, and one was a speaker, Donovan again, great job tonight outside. And next, we are going to go into our brief moment of reflection. A lot has happened in our country, across the world, and in our community over the last two weeks, so I'd like to ask everyone to pause and reflect on everybody's personal concerns, moments of reflection, and those of importance. Thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on May 12th, 2020, which were distributed in advance of this meeting.
Move to accept?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public participation, it's my pleasure tonight to recognize June, in addition to it being Pride Month, it is also Migraine Awareness Month, and there are hundreds of people in our community that are afflicted with migraines, and one of them, Renetta Stokes, who's here tonight with her daughter, Sonia, has encouraged me to do a proclamation and share some information about what it means to be afflicted with migraines and how we as a community can support them. I'd like to invite her to the podium to introduce the topic, and then I will present her with the proclamation from the city.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ellen, I appreciate this. Migraine is a neurological disease that presents in different ways for each person living with chronic migraine. I've had it for over 30 years, as I can say, and people continue to say it's just a headache. It's not just a headache, it's a debilitating neurological disorder, pain, nausea, vomiting, you name it, vertigo, I get light sensitivity, sound sensitivity, everything, so I just wanted to bring some awareness. I do work at Bristol Hospital, I go to work daily, even though I can't have a migraine, but I consider myself a functioning migraineur, because I do my job to the best of my ability, I am a caregiver, that's what I do by nature, and if I didn't have the support of my family, my husband, Michael, my daughter, so, yeah, and my son, Jalen, I don't know what I'd be able to do daily. So again, I extend everyone, just to go on the websites, CMA is Chronic Migraine Awareness, they have tons of information. I have my extended family, my coworkers, my friends, and now I have the support of all the community members here. Don't get me wrong, there are days when I do want to stay in bed. There's another support group that I found called ARMS, it's called Advocates Removing the Migraine Stigma. There's not a lot of research out there, there's not a lot of support, so we're just trying to bring more awareness to it, and I asked Mayor to proclaim, I'm sorry, June 29th as Chronic Migraine Awareness Day, to show support. Our color is purple, which there's also other things that are purple, as you can see, all the purple that I have on today. So again, I just want to say, thank you for your support, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, stay right there. In recognition of Migraine Awareness Month, celebrated on June 29th, whereas migraine disease is a genetic neurological condition characterized by episodes called attacks, with approximately 36 to 40 million Americans suffering from this disease, and whereas the effects of migraine, headache, and cluster attacks are experienced on a spectrum, presenting significantly different levels of intensity, frequency, and disability, and whereas research, funding, and public education are crucial for those living with one or more headache diseases and/or comorbid medical conditions. Now therefore, I, Ellen Zapposasou, Mayor of the City of Bristol and the City Council, do hereby proclaim June as Migraine Awareness Month, and ask our citizens to support and show compassion to those who are dealing with this debilitating condition. And in witness thereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused the great seal of the City of Bristol to be affixed this ninth day of June in the year of our Lord, 2020. So if you'd like to come forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renita.
Okay, is there any other public participation, either in chambers or on the call, of anybody who would like to address the City Council? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to announcements, and the first one is, I would just like to let everybody know, and especially for our viewing audience, where we stand with Bristol's response to the census, and I believe Councilman Rosato has been tracking that?
Yes, I have, thank you, Your Honor. The Census 2020 will impact our community in a great way, from the education, to programs that we depend on, like wildlife, housing, et cetera, to policemen and firemen, so it's important that everyone takes the time to fill out their census. Some statistics that are as follows, to date are, nationally, we are at 60.8%, in Connecticut as a whole, we're at 64.5%, in Bristol, we're at 68%, and of that, which 52% use the internet to respond. In 2010, Bristol's response rate was at 73%, so you can see we're kind of down from 2010. I just encourage everyone to fill out their census in order to preserve the community services we all depend on every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Other announcements, starting with Councilman Barney? She put in something.
Yes, so thank you, Your Honor. You know, since the death of George Floyd on May 25th, our country and city have seen a movement of protests focused on the unlawful use of force that was found to be the cause of death for Mr. Floyd. In response, there have been many truly helpful campaigns designed to help ensure that law enforcement across the country are able to apprehend suspects without use of deadly force. One of the most compelling plans that I've seen is called Eight Can't Wait. These eight policies have been proven to decrease the frequency of deadly force as they ask individual police departments to implement a series of programs shown to deescalate situations. In case you're curious what those are, those are ban chokeholds and strangleholds, require de-escalation, require warning before shooting, requires exhaust of all alternatives before shooting, duty to intervene, ban shooting at motor vehicles, require use of force continuum, and require comprehensive reporting. So before I ask our Chief Gould to come forward, because I would like him to just kind of give us some information, I do want to say personally that the Bristol Police Department was instrumental in the facilitation of the peaceful protests that have occurred here in Bristol. We're grateful for that, because as I was able to witness, everyone is able to peacefully come together to gain further understanding of the race issues that occur daily, not just between police and citizens, but in day-to-day life. So Chief Gould, if you wouldn't mind, if you could please come to the podium, I would like to know more about how the Bristol Police Department could adopt some of these policies, and if we already have some of these put in place already. Thank you.
Take off the mask, if you don't mind. Yes, thank you for having me, and I look forward to having the discussions tomorrow night, really looking forward to our community discussion, so we can talk about what we are doing at the Bristol Police Department. I do want to say something in recognition of the protests that we had here in Bristol. Thank you for crediting the Bristol Police Department, but I would be remiss in saying that, you know, it wasn't the Bristol Police Department, it's our community, and, you know, coming out and, you know, voicing their rights and doing it in a unbelievably peaceful and manner. I just, I'm privileged to serve this community, and seeing everybody come out, it was remarkable, and I'm here to listen, and I'm here to learn, and I want to do business better. So we'll be, you know, taking every precaution, every review, to try to do better. I'm very proud of this police department, I think we do a very good job, but I, as most of you know me, I don't rest on that, I'm always looking for ways to improve and get better, and taking tremendously unfortunate and unjust actions that we saw, and not letting those just go by. You know, it's about now, healing, and then looking at what we can do better with that. So I don't have, I don't know if you have specific questions for me, but I can just give you a quick overview. I am aware of Eight Can't Wait, and though the policies may not be specifically spelled out, we, those are absolutely implementable, and we're looking at that, and we're reviewing that, and I can share some of the stuff that's already built into our training and such. I do want to say real quick, though, that I understand that the job of a police officer is to protect the life and property of civilians, and it has to be in compliance with applicable law. It is just imperative that we use only the amount of force necessary and reasonable to accomplish lawful objectives, and control a situation, effect an arrest, overcome resistance to arrest, or defend ourselves, or more importantly, others, from immediate harm. We understand that when force is necessary, the degree of that force employed should be in direct relationship to the amount of resistance exerted, or the immediate threat to officers or others in harm's way. There is no doubt of compelling public interest that officers authorized to exercise the use of force, do so in an objectively reasonable manner, and in a way that does not violate civil rights guaranteed by our Constitution and applicable law. Officers who use unjustified, excessive force absolutely degrade... Officers who use unjustified excessive force absolutely degrade the confidence of any community they serve. It undermines our legitimacy and our authority, and hinders our ability to provide something that I take very seriously, which is effective law enforcement services to our community. With that being said, I have been asked, and was asked as recently as at the flag raising, which was spectacular and remarkable comments, I got to tell you, that was awesome. Do we have a policy? And we do. We have a policy. We are trained in our use of force policy, we're trained at the police academy, and we are trained throughout our entire career with our use of force policies. It's what we consider one of our most highest liability policies, and it's something that we take very important. But there's room to improve it, and looking at the Eight Can't Wait, there are certain, even though we follow those standards, we have an opportunity to make some things more clear, which we're looking into. And I will tell the council that I have already ordered a review of our use of force policy, which my command staff is doing, in looking at best practices and working with our training division to see if there's areas where we need to tighten up on our guidelines. So first and foremost, one of the things they talk about is chokeholds. And we, I've never, I've been a police officer for 27 years now, and I've never been trained in a chokehold, it's not recognized training, it's not something that I was trained in in the academy and such. So, you know, we understand that that's what's, you know, being seen across the nation. But I can speak for Connecticut, it's just not something that's part of our training. And if we have incidents where stuff like that's happened, we have protocols in place to look at that. De-escalation is absolutely part of our philosophy, and something that we train in and practice. You know, we have, just spell it out, that we use alternatives to force, if possible, prior to using force, and avoid using force against persons who are only verbally abusive, momentarily uncooperative, or have stopped resisting. We also take it to that if an officer determines that immediate action is not appropriate or necessary, the officer should attempt to call and wait for assistance prior to using force. So we train that, and we believe in that, that though there may be an immediate situation, there may be an opportunity to step back from that situation and call for help, instead of taking that on alone, where a lot of times when that can happen, that can result in some bad circumstances. So, you know, that you're talking about shooting at motor vehicles, moving car, you know, state law in Connecticut protects that. You know, so there's already some great policies in place for that stuff. We have warning, you know, whenever we can, we train. That's what we do, and we're out there training. We are training, we're talking as well. And it's actually a skill to help you, because one of the, when we're telling people to breathe, you breathe talking, so that's, we're on the line, you know, police, don't move. We advertise, we, that's what we do. We give warnings. Now, there's always a situation where it may not be feasible, because something happened, but that's how we train, and it's stuff like that's in our policies. And again, I don't know if you have specific questions, but I'm just trying to give an overall of what we're doing. And I do want to say that, and I've come before you before, we believe in accountability, and we believe in transparency. And I think as a byproduct of that, I've talked about how we've reached Tier Two accreditation standards in the state of Connecticut. And just a little background, there are three tiers, three being the final, and we're on our way to Tier Three. With approximately 167, 169 police departments, we're only one of 27 to attain that. And again, I think that's just a byproduct of our, what we're trying to accomplish at the Bristol Police Department. And what that means is that our policies and procedures are best practices, and they're reviewed by an outside board that comes in from the state of Connecticut to see if we're meeting these standards. And it's not just that we have a policy in place, but we have to demonstrate that we are, we show proofs through report writing and such, that we're adhering to these policies. And that helps us become re-accredited, and helps us, you know, get on to the next tier. So this business is constantly looking at yourself, we just don't settle, and just be happy what we have. We're always looking to improve and do better. And I just believe that there's always a way to do business better. So, you know, those are things. Another thing that I want our public to be aware of, that some questions have come to me too, and rightfully so, if force is used on a person, and it doesn't have to be through a firearm, if we have any force that's used on an individual, any force, and it results in any type of serious physical injury, or possibility of serious physical injury, or disfigurement, or impairment of health, and death, by our protocols, that's immediately referred to the state's attorney's office. You know, the days of us conducting that investigation on its own are over, and I believe for good reason. So something like that happens, you know, the protocol is to immediately get the Division of Criminal Justice involved. And so, we have, people ask that, and if, you know, if that happens, so, you know, we have that accountability, we have someone else coming in. In the case of, by law, Connecticut has taken some great steps with this, is if there is a, an incident like that, especially when it comes to a police-involved shooting, not only does it get referred to the Office of the State's Attorney, but in our jurisdictions, we have a state's attorney that oversees our jurisdiction. Well, to keep it objectively objective, and to get away from any claims of bias or anything like that, our law is that it has to be referred to the, our state's attorney would get notified, who then refers it to the chief of state's attorney's office, who then assigns the investigation to a state's attorney that is outside of our, that's someone we don't deal with, to keep it an independent investigation, and to avoid any possible conflict of interest. So, you know, state of Connecticut is doing some very good things, and we're looking to do more. I currently sit on the executive board for the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, and I can tell you from our president that our state has the full commitment of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, that we are going to look at everything, nothing's off the table, and look at ways of doing business better.
Great. Well, thank you, Chief Gould, I appreciate that, and thank you for entertaining that question, Your Honor. I just felt like I wanted to hear it from you too, because, you know, I've actually seen on social media, a friend of mine who doesn't live in Bristol anymore, after things started to come out, sent an email to the police department and received a response back about all these detailed de-escalation trainings that you already engage in with your staff, and she was very impressed. And I was happy to see that, because in a world like we're living in right now, nobody really knows where to go for the right information. Nobody's really sure what's real and what's not, and I just felt like there's no better way for our community to feel comfortable about what we're doing here in Bristol than to hear it from you, because I feel that you're very respected, and you take this job really seriously.
Absolutely.
And I truly appreciate your dedication to the City of Bristol, and helping facilitate these things as we go through a very challenging time as a country, and many of us are overloaded with information. And to have an opportunity for people that are at home, or are here, or are watching in, you know, future broadcasts, to hear it from you, and know that you're dedicated to being open-minded and ensuring that bias has no place in Bristol, I think means a lot to our community. So I really commend you for being so vulnerable, I think there's a huge power in that, and acknowledging that we can always do better. And I know I can, and I wasn't sure what to expect when I came on council. I definitely didn't think I'd endure a pandemic, and one of the largest civil rights movements in our modern history. But here I am, and that's why we're here, to ask the tough questions, and work with our city departments. So, thank you.
I appreciate it, and, you know, I think I've said it, and it's always worth saying that this is a privilege to serve you all, so I know that, and I honor that, so.
Thank you, it's great to work with you.
I think it's important for people to know too, that the diversity, inclusion, and equity conversation that we're having in Rockwell Park tomorrow at 6:30, so that's Wednesday, June 10th, Rockwell Park Amphitheater, bring a chair, bring your ears, bring your voices, but I think that that's probably going to be another opportunity for you to review some of these items, because they are kind of at the top of the list of people's concerns.
Yes.
So we will be doing some overview discussions, we will have some breakout groups, and then we'll have some conversation amongst neighbors that maybe people haven't met yet. So we look forward to seeing you there, and that's free and open to the public.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Gould is not wearing a body cam, but we have had body cam in the Bristol Police Department since 2016, I believe.
I think it's really important. Thank you, Mayor. I think that's so important, and I want to, and I want to say something else about that. So we started a body camera project well before, we were one of the first police departments in the state of Connecticut to come on with a fully implemented body camera project. Each officer that works on the front lines has his or her own body camera that has to be activated during police calls for service. As you know, because you passed an extremely expensive but worthwhile program, one of the things that we pay for is outside storage, so that none of the data can be manipulated, it's held by a third party. That's important, because the new project that we're moving forward with, our new body cameras that you approved, have come up with some incredible technological advances. And when you talk about what one of Eight Can't Wait, they talk about reporting. What's neat about this new system is anytime an officer use, retrieves his or her firearm or taser, once it removes from the holster, the body cameras automatically start recording. It's all based on chips and stuff like that. Not only does it activate your body camera, but it activates body cameras in, you know, a certain vicinity. Our body cameras are typically activated manually and such, you know, and sometimes we've seen situations where an officer rolls up on a situation that turns instantly dynamic, and they get involved, and they don't have that quick time. This will alleviate that. So anytime a weapon system is being used, it does the recording and kicks on. So, I mean, just to highlight the accountability and transparency, so, you know, we won't have that accidental nonactivation or such. So I'm looking forward to those advancements as well. So I think it's important, the body cameras have been tremendous for us. I think it's, you know, you just, you want to talk about being accountable, wear a camera every day, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So continuing with announcements, Councilman Fortier.
None for me.
Swinging this way, Councilman Kelly.
I do not, thank you.
Do you want to talk about your tie?
Ah, sure. It was given to me by a coworker last year. Oh, you didn't really want me to answer that?
I really did.
When they saw my picture in the pride flag raising, and she left it on my desk, and I saved it, and thought it'd be appropriate to wear it this year. And I've received many compliments.
Yes, I was going to say, you're looking quite dapper tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman Han.
I have no announcements, thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman Rosado.
No, what's that, Your Honor?
Councilman Poleski.
No, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have items 5A through F. Do any members of the council wish to pull any of those items off for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, items 5A through F?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item six, reports and committee reports. We have at least one from the real estate committee, is there an additional one coming out of the subcommittee meeting earlier?
Actually, Your Honor, I have two.
You have two?
Two more.
All right, so we'll start with real estate, where we will have three reports.
This is in regards to a lease with Bristol Hospital. I hereby authorize, I hereby move to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with Bristol Hospital Incorporated and/or its assigns for the benefit of the Bristol Woman Infant Child, WIC, program for city-owned property located at 11 Bellevue Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut, for a term of one year commencing on or about June 15th, 2020, through on or about June 15th, 2021. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $1,500 per month for a total of $18,000 per year. I further move to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with Bristol Hospital Incorporated and/or its assigns for the benefit of the Bristol Parent and Child Center for City-Owned Property located at 51 High Street, Bristol, Connecticut, for a term of one year commencing on or about June 15th, 2020, through on or about June 15th, 2021. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $1,500 per month for a total of $18,000 per year. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council's office to effectuate the same.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to bring a new item regarding Gina Street to the table.
Motion has been made to bring an item concerning Gina Street to the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I received a, an email from Vincent Verillo, broker associate, regarding property on Gina Street and inquiring for purchase. It's, "Good morning, David Skroh gave me your contact information about purchasing a little piece of property the City of Bristol owns on the cul-de-sac that we're building the new construction. Can you please advise on how to pursue the purchase of the triangle parcel that was discussed with Dave?" And so I make a motion to place this email on file, and to refer the possible sale of the land on Gina Street to the Real Estate, Planning, 824, and Public Works Committees.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And your third item?
My final real estate item, Your Honor, is I move to bring to the table an item regarding Glen Street for real estate.
Motion has been made to bring Glen Street to the table, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, there's a parcel on Glen Street that was combined, Lot 35B on Lake Avenue, 35D on Glen Street, and 35C on Glen Street. It was combined to make it more easier to market for sale. So with that in mind, I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into an exclusive right-to-sell listing contract with Keller Williams Realty for the property known as 35C Glen Street, Lot 35B Lake Avenue, Lot 35D Glen Street, and Lot 35C Glen Street, having been merged into Lot 35C Glen Street. having been merged into Lot 35C Glenn Street. Said listing agreement to commence on June 10th, 2020. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to review and/or, to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanted to state that in the real estate committee meeting, I would have preferred the RFP process, so I'll be voting no on this motion.
Your Honor, there, there are pros and cons to both ways and it, and, and there are reasons for both. And this is the way we ended up.
Okay, understood. So all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Chair votes yes. Okay, moving on to salary committee. Or staying with the real estate committee? Public hearing one?
Oh, yes. Your Honor, can we go and? It might be in here, Greg.
No, thank you.
I have the motion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So many motions today.
Your Honor, I'd like to bring to the table another motion for the real estate committee. This, make a motion to bring the, for the D'Amato, a motion to bring this item to the table?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of bringing the D'Amato item to the table?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Pursuant to seven dash one six three E of the Connecticut general statutes, the real estate committee requests the city clerk to set a date for a public hearing to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a lease agreement with D'Amato Realty One LLC for a portion of the city-owned property located at MAP Four, Lot Number 17, Enterprise Drive, Bristol, Connecticut. The public hearing will be held on June 30th, 2020 at 5 o'clock PM in the City Council Chamber, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, and for the city clerk to publish said notice in accordance with the statute.
Is there a second for a discussion?
Second.
Second.
Purchase, not a lease.
Oh, that's right.
It said lease and there is a purchase.
Okay, so, so from my clarification, we're scheduling a public hearing so that the public can be heard and then following that, I would be authorized to enter into a purchase agreement? Okay, so it's two action items within that motion. Is there any other questions? We're clarifying the motion to read that it is a request to purchase, not lease. And this is a small strip of property that borders the industrial park and the Covanta entrance, which we currently do not have a use for.
Your Honor, this will, it's, it's to provide another exit and provide, it'll alleviate some of the traffic from Amazon. So it's a good position all the way around.
Okay. Hearing no other questions or concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to salary committee, we have three items.
Yes, Your Honor. The first one is the elimination of the position of Parks Office Coordinator. The motion would read to approve elimination of the position of Parks Officer Coordinator effective June 10th, 2020, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? This is just a continuing effort to realign and reorganize the Parks and Youth Community Services Office as we are approaching actually about a year of the official merger. As we do with every position, when a vacancy occurs, we do a complete evaluation as to whether that position is still necessary within the confines of that office organization. And this one has been found that it is no longer needed based on the reorganization. So the position is being recommended for elimination. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
The second one also involves the Parks and Recreation Youth and Community Services, and it is to approve a change of title and job description of the Recreation and Outreach Coordinator, Community Engagement Coordinator is the new title, in the Department of Park Recreation Youth and Community Services effective June 10th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Item three, also for the Park Recreation Youth and Community Services Department, it is to approve the elimination of the position of light truck driver and addition of a position of park maintainer in the Department of Park Recreation Youth and Community Services effective June 10th, 2020, and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else from salary?
No, Your Honor.
Moving on to the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School Building Committee report.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are exactly three meetings since the last time this council has met. The building committee met on a special meeting on, on May 14th to discuss contracts and make some revisions due to the budget. And on the 26th of May, we had a community forum, a online virtual community forum. And at that, in that forum, we had alumni from the school provide some history of the school and give some stories about how meaningful the school was to the community and the classes that attended that, that school. In addition, the architect provided layouts. Over 500 pictures are available with color schemes, designs, classroom designs, and finish work. And the construction manager talked about the, the events that are scheduled for the, the next couple of months. And also Assistant Superintendent Dieter did a wonderful job tying it all together, discussing the timeline, programs, and what we can expect over the next couple of months. Also on that evening, the building committee met and we, if you've driven by the site, you can see that there's been considerable work now prepping for stage one. Fencing has been installed throughout the perimeter of the building and all the demolition permits have been filed and accepted and work has begun. The architect again gave an overview of some changes that the committee members had requested and Phase Two planning for contracts is now underway. So it's moving along and I would encourage everyone to look at the, the Board of Ed or city website, look at these pictures. I have to tell you, if you haven't seen pictures of the design plans for the theater, it is a sight to see and something we can, I think, all be very, very proud of. That's it, Your Honor. If any questions?
Any questions of Councilman Poleski? Okay, hearing none. Why don't we, before we go to arts and culture reports, stick with you for ordinance?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. If we can bring a report from the ordinance committee, the ordinance committee had a public hearing on June 2nd to discuss ordinance sections 15 dash 41 through 15, 45. And the ordinance committee has this recommendation. I hereby move that sections 15 dash 41 through 15 dash 45, the offenses and miscellaneous provisions section, Article Three, alcoholic liquor and code of ordinances for the city of Bristol, Connecticut, is hereby amended as provided, as, excuse me, as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments in additions to the code of ordinances and they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Your Honor, may I make one comment?
Yes.
You know, the, our committees meet monthly and as you know, we do a lot of research in between meetings. So I just want to publicly thank Councilwoman Mary Fortier. Mary is, her work ethic and helping us and digging in, and if you give her an assignment, she gets it done. And I just want to say we appreciate that very much. And you know, Mary, your understanding of government and the resources you give us, I, I just want to say thank you because we're working on, see, some of the charter revision changes, but it goes deeper than that because we have to dig into how we actually function as a city and as a department. Mary, your experience, I just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is that it from ordinance?
It is. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back up to City Arts and Culture Commission. Councilman Han.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City Arts and Culture Commission has been working on a project for the last several months to commission a mural on Main Street next to Webster Bank. And what we've done is we've selected our artist and we're going to be unveiling the mural at the next city council meeting. But the artist that we've selected is from Connecticut. His name is Corey Payne. He graduated with a BFA in illustration from the Hartford Art School and he has, his works being shown up and down the East Coast. He has murals in Hartford, all over Connecticut, Boston, Atlanta, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Washington, DC, and yes, even Bristol, Connecticut behind the bicycle shop. So he has done so much work and we're very pleased to be working with Corey. The graphical representation that we reviewed included things such as mums, the flower of the mum, the Ferris wheels, a clock for the Clock Museum, are just some of Bristol references. But you'll also see a bicycle in reference to the derailers and the brakes that were manufactured, I believe at New Departure here in Bristol. Derailers were first manufactured here in Bristol. So there, there are subtle references as well. And it, it all comes together with children playing, they're riding a bike on a path to Bristol's bright future with a roller coaster track behind them symbolizing the path it took to get there. But it, it is truly a beautiful work and we're excited to be working on this with Corey and we can't wait to unveil it to you next month. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, since we're down at that end, Councilman Kelly? Other committee reports?
Yes, I do. Two brief committee reports, Your Honor, of school readiness and the Board of Education, which I'm going to ask you to help me out with a bit. First, school readiness. We like to remind parents to register their children. And I know this sounds, I sound like a broken record, but it's very important. Online for kindergarten. You can go to the Board of Ed website, click on centralized registration, and there's a link, link there for the kindergarten registration. And if your child attends a Board of Education pre-K program already or gets special services, they don't have to register. Their child's information will automatically be rolled over to their home school. But the parents still have to provide the Bristol Burlington Health District with needed medical information. And transition to kindergarten folders, which are a gift from the School Readiness Council, are available for pickup at the food distribution sites Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or at the outer lobby of the United Way or the Board of Education building. And just a reminder that with the COVID-19 pandemic, new guidelines have been distributed by the Office of Early Childhood for Childcare Centers. And that, this limits the size of classrooms. It's 10 children per classroom and there are other numerous requirements which are going to be shared as well. And unfortunately, this means that there'll be less childcare slots available in the city and the state until these restrictions are lifted, which will hopefully be soon. The mayor and I and many other people in the city had the opportunity to attend both the Central, Bristol Central and Bristol Eastern commencement exercises, which were on Memorial Boulevard. And what they consisted of were, the cars were lined up, decorated, parents, I saw some young siblings, friends made a couple passes up and down the boulevard. And they were greeted by Mr. Broderick and Mrs. Farrell, who personalized the greeting for all the graduates and it was very nice. And the mayor and I were able to stand on stage and witness all this, get involved a bit, along with the Deputy Superintendent of Parks, Sarah Larson, and Chief Gould was there. Chief Gould is everywhere. And Dr. Dieter, the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Carbone, Mr. Wininger, Mr. Higgins, Principal at Bristol Eastern, Mrs. Farrell, I already mentioned, and Mr. Sinatra, who is a Vice Principal. And they're all dynamic people, all have great relationships with the students and it shows in their interactions. And I also saw the Bristol Teacher of the Year there, Gina Gallo. So can you share anything about the experience, Mayor?
I think that it was great to see the Board of Education go to such great lengths to recognize the seniors who really, you know, you go through Bristol Public Schools for 12 years and then to have your senior year, second semester, just collapse in front of you was, was really heartbreaking for so many people. And I think that the administration should really be given credit for what they're trying to do to really make up for the significant loss. And I, I really was impressed to see the large percentage from both senior classes at Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central who were able to come. But for those who were able to actually go around the circle, it wasn't just the names of the students with their faces on the signs. There was elaborate decorations and all types of references to the four years that they've spent at their respective high schools. So senior nights have concluded. We had interdepartmental cooperation from Parks and Fire, Police, and Public Works, which was great to see. And I think that if there is any type of silver lining in terms of the pandemic, it really is the fact that it has strengthened interdepartmental relationships even more so than our constant discussion about collaborations. So the next phase for them is to start doing the graduation walks, which will be filmed by Nutmeg, our friends that are here with us tonight. And that will be compiled so that there will be some, you know, memento of their graduation pieced together over several days that they'll be able to take. And I think we've all learned a lot about resiliency and especially the resiliency of our students. And hopefully this will be one of the bigger things that they face as they continue on through a successful post-secondary military unemployment after high school.
If I could just add one more thing about these commencement exercises because the mayor and I are both, at both of them, and there's a great synergy between the mayor and the superintendent of schools. And that always hasn't been the case. But with this great relationship, we all benefit from it. The students benefit, the taxpayers benefits because there's significant savings when the city and the Board of Ed works together. And I see the relationship getting stronger and flourishing. And as I say, we all win with that. So it's nice to see. Thank you.
Councilman Han, do you have any other reports?
No further reports. Thank you.
Councilman Rosado.
I do, Your Honor. The Bristol Senior Center will begin distribution of the farmer's market coupons starting mid-July. Eligible persons will receive $18 in coupons. You must be age 60 or under 60 and permanently disabled living in subsidized senior housing. There are income limits as well. Due to COVID-19, please call the Senior Center at 860-584-7895 for further details on the distribution process. Summer care formerly summer camps through Bristol Parks Recreation Youth and Community Services will begin on June 29th, which will run for seven weeks. The hours of care will be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Anyone interested in scholarships can contact Stephen Bynum at stevenbynum@bristolct.gov or visit the bristlerrec.com for further information. In conjunction with our Phase Two per government statutes, our city sports will begin opening with less contact sports on June 17th. And sports that involve more contact like basketball, those will begin on July 6th. Again, please visit bristlerrec.com for further details on openings and closures under the announcement section. I want to just talk real quick about, about the two peaceful demonstrations that we had last week. And it may be repetitive, but it'll, it'll click in towards the end in regards to the protests of Black Lives Matter. Both events were led by young citizens of our community who are fighting to make a difference, not only for themselves, but all current generations and generations to come. Their voices have been heard and we look forward to working with them in the near future. Bristol will be holding a community conversation of diversity, equity, and inclusion at Rockwell Park Wednesday, June 10th at 6:30. Social, social distancing will be enforced. I just repeated that. I just want everybody to know. It's very important that we all attend. And what's really important is those voices that were heard, were out there, we, we're listening to them. Also, as a, as a team, as a council. Also, as a team, as a council, we want to be part of their changes and listen to what they have. We educate ourselves through them. I also want to recognize the Bristol Police Department for all their assistance in preparation. They worked diligently from the logistics to insurance security detail when it was necessary to block off roadways so that all participants could demonstrate freely and in a safe manner. I also want to thank the Parks Department for their hard work in making sure that the park and areas were clean and ready to use in such a timely manner on such short notice. Most of all, I want to thank all participants of our community for coming out to express their peace and stories that brought awareness to all efforts, that we keep moving forward towards change, and we're no longer placing a Band-Aid on what's been getting covered up for so long. Change is coming, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. One other item for the diversity conversation tomorrow in Rockwell Park. We've had a very generous offer from one of our local community members to do interpretation for the hearing impaired community, so that will be part of it as well. So we'll be incorporating that as well as to, again, listen to everyone and let everybody hear what's being said, even the members of our hearing impaired community, which are often overlooked in terms of city meetings and, and procedures that we have in place. Okay. Committee reports from this side. Sure, we'll do it under that. Okay.
And I have one more committee report. This is from the Water Department. I'm just going to briefly read their press release. In early March, the Water Department suspended fire hydrant flushing so as not to impact residents or water supply due to the pandemic. Today, the Bristol Water Department announced it intends to resume water hydrant flushing later this month. We flush hydrants throughout the city annually because over time sediment from mineral deposits and iron builds up in the bottom of the water mains. When there is a high demand from consumption or by the fire department, the sediment can get disturbed and causes the water to become discolored. The longer the sediment is allowed to build up, the worse the decolor, discolorization can be. And thus, the mains are flushed annually to prevent such issues, said Robert Longo, Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Department. With so many people home over the last three months and the increased emphasis on hand washing and cleaning, we know that consumption has increased. However, it is important to ensure that the water quality is of the highest quality and flushing ensures that. On June 15th, the Water Department will resume the flushing program during the overnight from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. In July, they will return to normal hours of operations for flushing from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Notices of areas to be flushed will be posted weekly on the Water Department Facebook and Instagram pages, as well as the Water Department website. Residents are also encouraged to sign up for direct email notifications through the Water Department website. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, last call for committee reports. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Do any members of the council have unfinished business? Okay, moving on to new business. The first item that we have listed for the past several months is the update on the coronavirus response. And tonight, it is going to be delivered by Councilwoman Fortier, who has been amassing the data and tracking some of these items. So I'll turn it over to her for this report.
Thank you. We are at the start of Week 19 of the pandemic here in Bristol. And the total depth testing data for Bristol can analyze the statistical significance. In other words, we have a population of about 60,000 here, and most of it is given to us per 100,000 people. We rank in the 40s out of 169 communities. How, on how we are identifying our cases, and we are going to be able to come up with mitigation strategies based on that. We've been doing very well, in other words, tracking our cases here. In the last three weeks, our new cases and our new incidence of coronavirus have been very stable, very little change at all, no uptick, and also not really any decrease. As of June 17th... Oh, excuse me. The governor's rules for June 17th have been published. In other words, lots more activities and businesses will be open on June 17th, and those rules for each different kind of activity are posted on the governor's website. And as of today, the number of positive cases that we've had in Bristol is 571, and the number of deaths related to coronavirus in Bristol is 71. Bristol was, despite all these negative numbers, was a beta tester for state contract tracing apps, meaning we are doing very well. We're at the forefront of tracking the contacts and the, the virus, how it's moving through our community. Thank you.
Brittany, I think a couple of your committee reports are relevant, so if that's what you were referencing.
Yes.
Let's do that now.
Sure. So I received an announcement from the library. They wanted to let everyone know that they're looking forward to the planned reopening of the main library by appointment only on June 22nd. Patrons will be able to call the main library for an appointment for assistance in the computer lab and reference department, and for limited browsing by appointment in the Children's Department, new book area, and large print reading room. And by appointment was mentioned quite a few times, so I think that should not be understated. It's by appointment only. The All Heart Library Grab and Go service will also continue to provide library materials to patrons by appointment, once again, at both the main library and Manrus Memorial Library until further notice. And I can give a personal testament, I recently used the Grab and Go service in light of all the new books that people have been making me aware of for exposure to my daughter and anti racism books. I use those services. We have the books available, and I'll make sure to send it back so other people can check them out. Last but not least, Fire Board at our last meeting, which I clumsily chaired, because Ellen usually does that meeting, and it's just big shoes to fill. But I was able to extract one really, I think, important piece of information from the chief's report. The Bristol Fire Department, in conjunction with the Bristol Police Department, led 16 birthday parades for residents who were not able to celebrate their birthdays as the world would wish due to COVID-19. And they did all of that while maintaining about the same level of calls that they received with no COVID-19. So I thought that was really incredible that, just to offer that little moment of happiness to people in Bristol, they managed their daily workloads and, and fit that in. So I thought that was really special and really talks about what our community is. So kudos on a job well done.
With 16?
16. Go check out their Facebook page, there's lots of great pictures. And that was just the April port, so that didn't include the May event, so there's probably even more.
I'm sure there are more.
Yeah, because there, there was some really great stuff. So check out their page.
The one item that I would like to add, because as I think about it, we're not going to meet before it happens, is we've been trying to figure out a way to commemorate everything that we're doing, and many communities have had bell ringings throughout this pandemic. So we've been in close contact with our church community and our faith community, and they have decided that they too would like to participate, and that it would be fitting for Bristol to do have some, to have something like that. But ours is going to be bigger. So we're going to do a community bell ringing on Saturday, June 20th, which is actually the 100-day mark for the pandemic from when we closed in March. That will happen at any church that is in Bristol that chooses to participate, and actually, the majority of them have already responded that they would like to. It will start at 4:00. They will ring their bells for a short duration. Some will have their bell choirs. And then St. Gregory the Great Church on the northeast section, Ann Maltby at Stafford, has invited everyone to then travel to their church, because they have a large parking lot, which would be good for social distancing, for an interfaith service, where we can remember those lives from Bristol that we've lost, as well as those that are still suffering the physical debilitation of coronavirus, celebrate our healthcare workers, as well as our first responders. Parking is available at St. Paul, and that will commence at about 4:30. So because we aren't meeting again, I'll just throw that in as the end of the coronavirus response report for, for today. You've heard from Diane Waldron about our financial implications, so we will be monitoring that. And we continue to meet every Tuesday morning with all of the city departments that are involved. So we are tracking that as well. And a lot of the great things that you've seen develop, including tonight and last night's senior nights, are born at these Tuesday morning meetings. So I'd like to just again thank all of our department heads and our staff. We have been incredibly fortunate and very healthy. We've only had two confirmed cases on the city side, one at Public Works, one here in this building. Both have recovered, of which we're very thankful. We've had a couple of employees with spouses who have become affected, and they too are recovering. So we have a lot to be thankful for as we approach that 100-day. Moving on to new business item B. We received a request from the neighbors that live around the Redstone Hill property. That was the subject of a zoning application to rezone late last year, yeah, late last year, November and December. So we put it on the agenda, and does somebody want to introduce this topic?
Sure, Your Honor. I'll introduce this letter. It was asked to be brought onto our agenda for discussion purposes. I think that myself and Councilwoman Fortier had a chance to read it as it applies to our, our district, but I'm sure the other council people did as well. I know that we reached out to the city's attorneys, because the proposal in the letter was to purchase the property to have as part of a, a park or neighborhood destination using open space grants. At this time, the property owner, Mr. Naples, is not selling the property, so I think that it wouldn't be applicable to submit an open space grant for it, since it's not a property that's actually for sale. I know that we will keep in contact with the attorney, though, and ask them to notify us if that changes in the future, if the property does come up for sale. But at this time, although I know that the citizens of that neighborhood were looking for us to purchase the property, I don't think we can, because it's not available.
Okay, so we will monitor that property in case the availability status changes. And then in the meantime, just a quick commercial out for anybody who is not familiar with our process, if that parcel had been available for purchase, we would have referred it to the, probably the Inland Wetlands Commission, as well as the Planning Commission. And the Wetlands Commission and our environmental engineer maintains a list of properties that the city is interested in, both for environmental purposes, as well as for recreational purposes. So that would be the process if this parcel or any other parcel becomes available in the future. That is of interest to the city. Is there any other questions or concerns regarding 8B, the proposal for Redstone Hill? Okay. Moving on, is there any other new business, starting on my far left?
None for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Barney?
Yes, I have one last item. So in light of the recent events across the country, I started to think about ways that Bristol might be able to facilitate more conversations about diversity and inclusivity. So personally, I attended a conversation on race hosted by a inspiring group of young black women in the Hartford area. I listened to this with many different commentaries on race in America and how we can move forward. I want to make sure that I call out the person that inspired me to make this comment tonight. There was a woman named Adrienne Jefferson. She is the Director of Cultural Affairs for the City of New Haven, and she spoke about the connection of art and culture and how those intersect with diversity. So I definitely wanted to make sure that I called her out today, because I really would never have thought about this had she not been on that call and had I not been a participant. So thank you, Adrienne, if you're listening by some way, for being so honest and inspiring. For those who don't already know, our Honorable Mayor, Mayor Ellen Zapposasou has created two incredible committees who are focused on these missions, but they are focused on them separately. The Arts and Culture Commission and the Diversity Council are two current committees that we have, and I would like to propose that they begin to work together. So I'm not sure what the rest of the council thinks of this idea, or if you'd like to discuss frequencies, but I guess, and someone will probably have to coach me, because I'm not too sure if I should make this in the form of a motion, or if it's just a referral to their committees to discuss, but I'd like for them to meet maybe at least quarterly together to discuss some intersectionalities between their, their committees.
I think it would be a referral to both, to both the Arts and Culture Commission and the Diversity Council, to encourage them to meet jointly, to discuss areas of where they could work together.
Okay, great. So then I guess I'll make that formal referral and request, and then hopefully they'll be supportive of that, because I think they'd be able to really help each other, be, bring even more impact to what their goals are for the city.
Okay, so that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm the representative of the Arts and Culture Commission, and I do want to say that this has come up in committee previously. And, and there's been discussion around how we can have a synergy between the two committees. So I think it will be a welcome discussion, and we actually have several ways that we think we can help facilitate that. So thank you.
And likewise, Councilman Rosado, you can carry that message back to the Diversity Council as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business continuing. Councilman Proleski?
None, thank you.
Rosado?
No, thank you.
Han?
No, Your Honor.
Really? And Councilman Kelly has none. Moving on to resignations.
And there are four resignations, Your Honor. The first resignation is from Ethan Grabowski, and he's the under 21-years-of-age representative for the Youth Commission. Second one is for Michael Lamoth from the Board of Finance. And then Richard Lacy as the full-time Corporation Counsel, and his resignation, or retirement, I suppose, is effective as of June 27th, 2020. And last but not least, Jeffrey Steg is, has a resignation as the part-time Assistant Corporation Counsel.
So, there's lots going on here tonight, isn't there? Some of you are wondering what we're doing, aren't you? So here's the first confession, because I'm going to start my appointments, but the stuff that you sent me, Attorney Clift, I left in my printer, so if you have extra copies, I'm going to need them. Okay. So is there a motion to accept and send a letter of thanks to Commissioner Grabowski and to Commissioner Lamoth?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And in the matter of the resignations of Attorney Lacy and Attorney Steg, first I'd like to say, Attorney Lacy, if you think that you've worked here over almost four decades and you're going to go out with just a three-line letter of resignation, then we're not going to let you get away with that. So stay tuned. I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything that you'd like to state tonight? Or shall we? You can come to the podium. God bless you, Attorney Lacy. 504 council meetings. All right, well, we'll circle back to that. That's it for the resignations, so we will move on to appointments. And I think that will be the segue for us to, first, I would like to move to appoint Attorney Jeffrey R. Steg as a full-time Assistant Corporation Counsel, effective June 28th, 2020, to fill the unexpired term of Attorney Richard E. Lacy, which ends in September of 2024.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second motion, to appoint Attorney Richard E. Lacy as a part-time Assistant Corporation Counsel, effective June 28th, 2020, to fill the unexpired term of Attorney Jeffrey R. Steg, ending November 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. Does he need a conservator is what I want to know. Seriously.
He wants to be here for meeting 505.
I think we have to call Judge Dorval.
I think that this is a great way to have consistency, continuity, and maintain the high level of institutional knowledge, as well as the, the great collaboration that we have within that office, and gives us some time to figure out what's going to happen in the near future. So thank you, gentlemen, for, for this, and I think it's, it's good for all of us. And I know that I speak on behalf of all the departments, that your office has really been extremely responsive and communicative to all of the needs, the regular ones, the, the very weird ones, and the ones that, you know, start with that infamous line, hey, I just have a quick question, which means that you're burrowed into hours worth of research on behalf of your colleagues. So thank you very much, specifically Jeff and Richard, as you switch roles, but also to Dale and Tom, thank you for all that you've done, especially over the last few months. I know it's been very tumultuous for all of us, especially your office. So, all in favor? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. And for our regular appointments, we have three tonight for the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. They are all for three-year terms, continuing to June of 2023. They are Tracy Dragon Beeland, Gloria Ewing, and Greg Klimic. So I'll make that in the form of one motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is for the Economic and Community Development Commission, and I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Michael Zammet, who is replacing Robert Passamano, who is a Section 2-9 resignation with an unexpired term to December of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good appointment, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mike has served on our Startup Bristol task force, and he is, I believe, in the first district. And I believe that he was auditing our Economic and Community Development meeting last Thursday, when his wife started to have contractions, and he is now a father of two, and on the Economic and Community Development Commission. So it's been a big week. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Board of Finance, we have two reappointments, both to June of 2024, and they are Nicholas Jones Jr. for a four-year term and Ron Burns for a four-year term.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to appoint Lenita Thomas to replace Larry Nelson as an alternate member for an unexpired term to January of 2021. And again, that's the Bristol Historic District Commission. We have recently elevated Mr. Nelson to a full-time member, so this is for an alternate seat.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment is to appoint Ramon Peters, also known as Ray, who is here with us in the council chambers, to replace Ethan Grabowski as our under 21-year-of-age member to the Youth Commission. Ethan is going on to college, which has created the vacancy, and this will be an unexpired term to March of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none?
I have a comment. I've seen Ray speak at the Board of Ed, and he's focused, and he's a good appointment as well.
Yep.
Congratulations.
And I believe that night, we were speaking of diversity, inclusion, and equity, not knowing what the next three months had in store for us.
Your Honor, just to touch base on this appointment here, this is kind of special for him because he's done a lot of good with our community. He's a police explorer, and he does these things not to be noticed at any level. As Peter said, he recognized him in the community, and as I was discussing with him, good things that you do within yourself, people recognize it, you become a stand-up citizen, and this is one of the reasons why you were asked to be part of this appointment. So congratulations on that. Thank you.
Did we vote?
No.
I don't think we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one for tonight is for the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is to appoint Richard Balsam to replace Morris Rippey Patton IV, Section 2-9 resignation. This shows as an unexpired term to July of 2020. So I guess we'll be seeing this again next month.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have one vacancy left for, well, actually two, because we are interviewing candidates for the Board of Finance. If there is anyone out there who is interested in the Board of Finance, you can let my office know. We'll be looking to fill that in July. We do have a vacancy still on the zoning commission, but there is someone that is interested, but I was unable to reach them today in order to confirm that interest. So we're going to hold that until July, just to make sure that that person is still able and willing to serve. So two vacancies. Please contact the mayor's office if you're of interest for those positions or would like to be considered for future vacancies on any of the city boards and commissions. So that being said, the last appointment for tonight is to reappoint Luis Provenzano, who is currently serving as Chair of the Zoning Commission, for a three-year term to June of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes the appointments process for tonight. Moving on to the end of our agenda, we have three, let's see, four items, and we are going to be adding an executive session. So the first item, if somebody could get the resolution ready for Agenda Item 11, we also have a resolution for Agenda Item 13, both of which will be roll call votes. I will turn this portion of the agenda over to the city clerk.
Item 11, resolution regarding approval of Bulletproof Fest partnership grant for $20,370 and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor or chief of police to execute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, who moved it? Did somebody move it?
No, I'll move it then.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There's a resolution to read. Does anyone have it?
I don't have it. Oh, you have it.
Does someone have it up already? Yeah.
Here, hard copy. Somebody look for 13.
...that the filing of an application for the 2020 Bulletproof Fest partnership grant to the U.S. Department of Justice is hereby approved, and that the mayor, Ellen Zapposasou, or acting mayor, and the chief of police, or acting chief of police are hereby authorized to execute such application, and any and all other documents relating to this funding/grant, including but not limited to any final funding/grant documents, and that the previous execution and filing of said application by the chief of police are hereby ratified. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Okay, the motion has been made, and there was a second. So this is a roll call vote. Before we do that, is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote starting on my left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion passes.
Item 12, authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents to settle claim against Morgan movers for $7,107.65 for damages to voting boxes and to refer to the Corporation Counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, resolution regarding approval for City of Bristol to enter into a restated intercommunity agreement regarding the Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee and to authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute. And there is a resolution to read?
And I do have that one, Your Honor. Resolution authorizing Mayor Ellen Zapposasou to enter into a restated intercommunity agreement regarding the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee. Whereas Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-221, grants all municipalities of the State of Connecticut with the authority to enter into intercommunity agreements to manage municipal solid waste. And whereas, in accordance with that statutory authority, the Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee, the BRRFOC, was formed pursuant to the 1985 intercommunity agreement between the municipalities of Berlin, Branford, Bristol, Burlington, Heartland, New Britain, Plainville, Plymouth, Prospect, Seymour, Southington, Warren, Washington, and Wilket, the municipalities. Whereas, the 1985 intercommunity agreement has been amended from time to time. Whereas, the municipalities are currently jointly engaged in the disposing of solid waste and managing recyclables pursuant to the Municipal Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Services Agreement, MSW and Recycling Agreements, and dated December 21, 2012, as amended. And whereas, the municipalities desire to continue contractual relationships to provide the residents and businesses of their municipalities with solid waste disposal services in their capacity as members of the BRRFOC by way of a newly restated intercommunity agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Bristol, having complied with all of its municipal and other applicable requirements to enter into the newly restated intercommunity agreement, authorizes its chief elected official or chief executive officer to execute the agreement, and to do so such other lawful things as are necessary to enter into the agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is actually a great amendment to this document. It used to be volumes, and it's been reduced down to just a few pages, which I know gave our Public Works Director some concern when he saw it. But it's actually a streamlined version that has now taken out a lot of that original language from when this was formed in 1985. So the Facility Operating Committee injures. Without any further questions or concerns, all in favor?
Aye.
It's a resolution.
Roll call.
Starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 And the chair votes yes. Okay, last item, number 14.
Request from Damato Associates LLC to lease approximately 1.5 acres, known as Lot 3-31 on 75 Batista Road, referred to Real Estate Committee, Planning Commission, Board of Public Works, and Board of Water Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business proper to come before the meeting?
You said an executive session.
I'm getting to it. Okay. All right, hearing none from the body. We do have a request to add an executive session concerning the City of Bristol and Green Hill School litigation. Is there a motion to bring that onto the table?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Clift, too, will be joining us in executive session.
Yes, my staff at Corporation Counsel's Office, and also will be joined by telephone conference by Attorney Lawrence Rosenthal, pardon me, from the law firm of Rogan Nassau. Rogan Nassau, Kaplan and Hertel, I think, is the law firm. And just for the record, this is with respect to litigation, discussion regarding litigation with respect to the HVAC system at Green Hill School, City of Bristol versus TSKP Studio LLC, et al., docket number HHD-CV17-6084696S.
So the motion is to go in, and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So hopefully we'll be right back out. I'd like to ask for a vote to come back into public session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? The record show that no votes were taken while we were in executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any motions to come before us?
No.
So today is Councilwoman Rosado's birthday. So we're going to take a group picture after we adjourn so that we can commemorate it.
Do we have our masks on?
Maybe. But we also have, we have to commemorate Peters' tie, Brittany's skirt, the fact that I almost wore the same dress that Mary is wearing tonight, but I didn't want to shave my legs, so I didn't wear it.
How about Teresa's hat? I like Teresa's hat.
Teresa's is always styling, so.
And we have Greg and Dave in suits. So let's take a picture before we go, since it's been that kind of week. Sounds good. We've got to fix your B. Okay. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's socially distance, so you don't have to put the masks on.
Okay. Motion carries. We are adjourned, thank you. Now we just need a photographer.